Good evening and welcome to the Town of Belgrade Planning Board meeting of December 5th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM and we're gonna start with a call to order with a roll call. Tonight in the board we have Mr. Richard Baker, came back from vacation in Hawaii. And we have Mr. Nick Sakaral, and we have Mr. Peter Sargent, and we have Mr. Dort Seal, and Mr. Craig Alexander, and our CEO, Hansa Razmuzen, and myself, Sarah Langgett. I will invite the members of the audience to introduce themselves, please.
Chris Bradley, President.
Thank you.
Bonnie Cap.
Ronald Beck.
Alright.
Adam Gardner.
Alright, thank you so very much. So I suspect that everybody signed up over here in the sheet to help with our minutes. And we're gonna proceed to new business. The new business, the first one we have is an application from Adam Gardner for Joan and Paul Bean. And the location is 308 Sandy Cove Road, map 20, lot 9. And the purpose is a shoreline zone application and it's gonna add a bunkhouse on post and septic. And going through the application paper. It says that the existing sewer disposal system type and capacity is 3. Present number of bedrooms is 3. Beds to be added on this application is 2. When did you purchase the property on the shoreline zone? It was in 1994. And the total area is 3.8 acres. The lot area within the shoreline zone is 160,528 square feet. Square footage of a vegetative surface with shoreline zone, including all structures, driveways, parking, walkways, and patios, is 3,116 square feet, which is about 2% coverage. What is the total area of cleared opening of wooded vegetation in square feet? It's gonna be less than 2%. The total number of structures on the lot is 3. And the present structure's square footage is 1,280 square foot. And the proposed structure's square footage is 560 square footage. And with that, I will open the floor for discussion. So Adam, would you like to do a further introduction of the application?
Yes. So we're looking to build a bunkhouse with, you know, just wet bar, no kitchen, no cooking facilities. Looking to take screen porch, which is like 10 by 16, which is roughly at 75 foot mark or so, from the actual lake side and slide that back, we'll be at 100 foot. So everything will be right out of that 100 foot. It's gonna add to the front, but I don't think it's needed where the location's gonna sit. Add on a two-bedroom septic and tie into the existing water that's there, which is community well water that runs off the river. I actually pulled the thermic offline and I did submit a, there it is, a second site plan, like a third or fourth page in maybe. You see the existing house, the screen room is labeled there to be removed. The front is 100 feet back. They own like three lots down there. So we're well over the distance from the back. We'll take down a little bit of trees, but it's so wooded in there that it's not gonna affect much of the mechanical coverage. We're still way, way below the 25%.
It's gonna be a 30 by 22?
It's gonna be, there's some plans, I don't know. Yeah, 22, 22, 30 by 30, there's an eight-foot screen porch on the front side of it.
Okay.
So Adam, that leads me to a question. The drawing obviously has the footprint at a little over 900 square feet, but on the application you have 660 square feet in the front.
That's probably the living space, not the deck. Correct, so that needs to be changed.
Uh, no, need to change the line already.
So run that by me again, what's?
That'd be 22 times 30. That's the interior living space, the footprint of the house, not including the deck.
Okay, and, and, and that question is the footprint.
Right.
So we'll, we can fix that on the original once it gets back.
So the footprint being added is the 660 because the other footprints already existed.
Oh. They didn't pick up.
Am I wrong?
I just did that math check, but it'd be 740, so it should be 740 where we're at.
So you're demolishing that other structure entirely?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be another change that would need to be added into the deck.
It's on the site plan, show that's demolished. Throwing it down, to be removed.
But this, this would be under 100 foot mark for that?
This one is, yes, but this, this one's within 100 foot, we'll tear it down.
Oh, okay, I see that now.
Yeah, it's right on there. So yeah, it should be 760, as Craig pointed out.
Okay.
That's right, sorry, 740 is what it should be.
I have a question. I'm not, I guess I'm not debating or arguing whether it meets the 20% lot coverage standard. But in looking at the site plan, I was just wondering how you calculated that you got it down to less than 2%. It's, appears to be more than that.
If you look at the, let's see, here, it's gonna be easiest way. So they own from, if you look at the Google Maps photo, they own the house, a half lot each side, and they own all the way across to the other side of the lake, which is shoreline zone. So it's less than 500 feet, so almost the entire lot is in shoreline zone. I think actually the entire thing is that you're counting all that back section because we're 500 feet, or less than 500 feet. So the 3.8 acres, everything counts toward that percentage. It's just a unique piece of property where it doesn't state which side we have to put the square footage on, you know, within 250 or 250 on the other side.
Okay. The other, and I don't, just looking through the packet, the, in the online packet that I received, it looked like there was a, maybe here, but erosion control plan that just had the old lines kinda going along. And I didn't know whether that was in fact the erosion control plan or what you.
We wouldn't be, those are, on poles.
Pardon me?
It's on poles, so this is gonna be very brutal experience.
It'd just be for the septic, we just do erosion. Sorry, so on the erosion, you had yellow lines, those are showing the property lines. That was taken off of the town map, so you can actually see where it's all in shoreline zone. You can see the other wetlands on the backside. And then there's an erosion mulch burn below where we're gonna build. And then there's really no place where the field is for that to actually run. Kind of top of the hill, it's all like, done underneath there, so that erosion burn gotta be driveway over the stoppage runoff. Like I said, it's all on posted pads, not planning to pull the stumps unless someone's right their way, so.
Adam, another question. According to the site plan, the squirrely public water system they have down there, the line book is gonna go right through this leach field and location of this new camp.
So we're gonna have to slide that back. I think it's closer to the road than it actually shows on there. But it just sits above the ground. It's just a.
Oh, it's in the above ground, it's a seasonal.
Two-inch seasonal alarm, yeah, that feeds the whole place. So the idea was to cut it, the property lines, slide it back and rehook it up. Are you talking to the association about that? Obviously how they, how they deal with that. It may be a chat and someone turns it on.
Is that licensed with the state public drinking water program?
Right.
Does it have more than 15 connections?
Yeah.
And then it's, has to be. I'm just, is there any setbacks that come into play here from the water lines? With the septic or?
Yeah, with the septic lines. And it's gotta be 18 inches running sewer line and I'm not sure about septic field. I think it's gotta be 20 feet. Yeah.
10 feet, I would feel, if we're there. So I'll have to move it 10, at least 10 feet. That's gonna end up right next to the river. We need that compliance. It's on the actually.
I mean, I'm not concerned about, you know, the leach aid imperiling the water line since it's above groundwater line, but.
It does specify on the septic plan that we have to move the water line. On the third page.
Yeah.
It just say you have to move that.
So this is the pipe that is right above the ground?
Yep, yeah, and just season also. When they did the Sandy Cove development, they have, I think, usually bottom of the hill, it's a wellhouse right there. It goes north and south and everyone has the option to tie into it. Some people have their own private.
So it's like a fire hose or is it PVC or what?
Yeah, black PVC. They even probably put junctions on each side of it.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So anyway, the answer to my question, I guess, is that the location on here is probably not accurate and it's actually close to the road.
It's gonna have to get a little closer to the road if it's, if that's what that is, yeah. But it stays that in the septic permit that we have to move it to install that septic.
There's, there's no setbacks on the road on that line? That you know?
No, I know that, I know. Some of them burying right under the road.
Yeah.
Right there.
Both public water lines are right in the right of way.
Well, it says on here that it needs to be at least, and I'm assuming somebody got that out of the plumbing code. That needs to be at least 10 feet from the tank and the field.
Yeah, anti-marble that the septic design, they put that in there.
Okay.
Certainly at 10 feet. Yeah, there'd be plenty of room to move it over.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question, but I think it's worth noting for the record that this is a large lot. Usually we get posted stamps for lots, but this is a large lot, a large area within the shoreline zone, which is advantageous for reasons that are probably obvious to everyone on the board anyway in terms of the stiff town of Belgrade decision. I mean, I, I think this is still an accessory structure because of its relatively small size compared to the original structure. It could be argued it's a dwelling unit potentially, but it doesn't really matter because they have more than a lot, enough lot area. And, and you make sure all the town attorney made a point of that we really need to emphasize that on the public record whenever we're doing these kinds of cases, so that if there's an appeal like there was with, actually in Sandy Cove, except the other direction on the road. The, you know, that's on the record for the appeals board and the courts and all that to consider.
Need a question. I haven't been here for a while, so excuse my ignorance, but in the court case, and you guys have been discussing it, it said it was principal structure in that stiff matter, but what in the ordinance prohibits a second principal structure if it's not a dwelling unit?
Currently, nothing.
Yeah.
But that's what the court ultimately decided, regardless of what's in the ordinance and/or in chapter 1,000, that a second principal structure requires twice the amount of lot area that a single one does.
Which they have.
But in this case, fortunately, they have it, regardless of what we decide, basically is what it comes down to.
Yeah.
So I, I just thought it was important to get that on the record.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board?
The, the shed is, is being moved, demolished?
The screen porch, the screen room, it's not the shed. The shed's out of the 100. That's, looks like it's newer, but the screen room itself, which I think is 10 by 16, we're gonna get rid of that, so it's like right in front of where the new bunkhouse would go. So we completely remove that.
I was thinking about redevelopment or what, what those plans are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all big trees right there and it's such a small area that, I mean, I don't think there's a need for it.
Yeah, no, now that's a screen, yeah.
You have to take it down by hand, so.
Yeah.
So I hear then that we're ready for the finding of facts and conclusion of law. You know how this process goes, huh? So just be patient with us. Alright, so Belgrade Planning Board, Finding of Facts and Conclusion of Law. Application for a shoreline permit. Application name is Joan and Paul Bean. Applicant address is 209 Sandy Cove Road, map 20, lot, was it lot 9?
Yeah, okay.
Lot 6.
Okay, I somehow I thought it was, I read 9 someplace. Oh, it's not here. So from the agenda to here, okay, great. So it's, we're slot 6. Okay, so it's slot 6. I'll fix that on the record. Findings of facts, the applicant on day applied for the shoreline for a shoreline permit to add a bunkhouse and septic. The application was presented to the planning board on 12/5/24 today. The findings of fact and conclusion of law were developed in conclusion with consideration of permitting application. Conclusions of law. Based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and all the materials submitted to it and the above finding of fact, the Belgrade Planning Board finds that the project is permitted to a accessory structure use, 16A, used on the section 14. Table 1 in the ordinance and further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions in section 16D of the ordinance. So this is the first second, I'm gonna bring my readers up. Alright, so the first one says, will maintain safe and healthy conditions. The board found this standard was met by PRAS, which is Perk.
Perk, I don't want to mention.
Thank you. Please, please. I will get it sometime. And submissions. And for now on that, we're gonna call that PRAS. And so we're gonna vote. Mr. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Langgett is five in favor, none opposed. Will resort, resort, will not resort result, result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface waters. The board found the standard was met based on PRAS. And we're gonna vote. Mrs. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yeah.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Langgett is five in favor and not opposed. Will adequately provide disposal of all wastewater. The board found the standard was met based on PRAS. And Mrs. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yeah.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Langgett is five in favor, none opposed. Will not have adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. The board found this standard was met based on PRAS. Mrs. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yeah.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Sarah Langgett is five in favor, none opposed. Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. The board found this standard was met based on PRAS. And Mrs. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yeah.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Langgett is five in favor, none opposed. Will protect archaeological and historical resources as the site designated in the comprehensive plan. The board found this standard was met based on PRAS. Mrs. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Langgett is five in favor, none opposed. Will, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. The board found this standard was met based on PRAS. Mrs. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yeah.
Mr. Alexander? Mr. Seal?
Yes.
And Ms. Langgett is five in favor, none opposed. In conformance with the provisions of section 15, land use standards, the board found this standard was met based on the evidence in the record and further as follows. So we're gonna go through each item and decide who applies and we're gonna vote at the very end. So the minimum lot size standards do apply. Principal and accessory structures do apply. Campgrounds, NA. Individual private campsites, NA. Commercial and industrial uses, NA. Parking areas, NA. Roads and driveways, NA. Signs, NA. Stormwater runoff, that applies, huh? Thank you. Septic waste disposal system, that applies. Essential services, NA. Mineral exploration and extraction. You got gold over there? NA. Agriculture, NA. Timber harvesting and land management roads, NA. Clearing and removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting, that applies, huh? No, no, we're gonna do some clearing there to, to get the bunkhouse in.
Which one does that now?
Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
Yes, that applies.
Alright, it's good. Let me show you guys a way. Hazard trees, stone damaged trees and dead trees removal, NA. Exceptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements, NA. Uh, vegetation requirements, NA. Erosion and sedimentation control, that applies because we're doing a septic, so, thank you. Shoreline stabilization.
No, no.
No, thank you, NA. Soils.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Because of the septic.
Thank you, applies. Water quality, applies. Historical and archaeological sites, NA. Resource protection, NA. So we're gonna vote for the whole thing right now. So we are, the evidence that is needed is minimal lot size standards, principal accessory structures, stormwater runoff, septic waste disposal system, clearing or removal of vegetation of aquatic links other than timber harvesting, erosion and sedimentation control, soils and water quality. So we're gonna vote right now. Mr. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Langgett is five in favor, none opposed. Alright, so now we go to the conditions of approval needed for me, to meet the required Belgrade shoreline zone ordinance findings in section 16D. Number one is that the managed stormwater runoff from the new and expanded structures in accordance with section 15I of the Belgrade shoreline zone ordinance and the main DEP of environmental protection best management practices. And I'm sure Adam is very familiar with these. So that's the first condition. Are we doing the second condition, which is for all construction projects located within 100 horizontal feet of the normal high water line of great pond of a great pond or 65 feet from the wetland or oil body and located in wooded vegetation, the project should comply with the clearing and vegetation removal performance standards of section 1502 of the ordinance. So this one applies, huh?
Well, it's beyond 100 feet.
Yep.
Thought you said within 100 feet.
Yeah.
It's between 75 and 100.
It's sort of, it would only be the demolition, but.
Well, the septic is within the 100 feet, is it?
No, no, it's not.
Okay. So we.
I would say it's not out.
It's not, okay, great.
It's my opinion.
Cause I'm tearing it down by hand.
Yeah.
So you are, you are agreeing with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Sakaral and Mr. Sargent, excellent, so NA. On that one, do we have any other conditions of approval? That's it. So now we'll go to a final decision here. Based on the above findings of fact and conclusion of law on December 5th, 2024, the Town of Belgrade Planning Board approve the will approve the shoreline permit application of Mr. Joan and Paul Bean. With the above conditions and at the leading of 12/5/24, develop these, begin findings of fact and conclusion of law on the remainder of the Belgrade Board of Appeals and adopt them with files, all these findings on 12/5/24. And we're, we're gonna vote for the whole thing now. Ready? Mrs. Sakaral?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Langgett was, is five, four votes in favor, none opposed. And you got your permit now. Thank you. Thank you, please. Thank you so very much. So next quarter of business is the applicant is Steve Farm, this is born in Pet. And the location is Magravhorn Loop Road, map 15, lot 36, 36F dash 14 dash 1 to 6. And the purpose is a subdivision division. Alright, with that, I open the floor to discussion. And just, Pat, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
No, I just have those two large lots left, 13 and 14, and I wanted to divide them up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, one was five acres and the other one was a little over six acres. So I've had them surveyed and divided up into nine, nine new lots. I'm sorry.
The plaque is on the table here.
I have a couple of small maps if anybody wants.
That would be helpful. So no new roads are being proposed?
No, just dividing up those two lots. No, just dividing up those two lots.
I just. I had to look it up, so just in case others had to as well, the uh. Appropriate part of the ordinance that deals with revision of approved plans is on page forty-five. At least in mine, I I think this is one of those ordinances for different version, different copies have different page numbers.
Is there more, I guess maybe that answers my question. So when I read the package, my question was what's being gotten proposed, it really doesn't say anything in the packet, that's.
Yeah, it's difficult to figure out from the packet, now that she said dividing the lots and range lots.
We pass that around.
This one?
Yeah, or anyone.
Do you want to come over here? God, that'd be so nice.
Okay, all these other lots have sold in the past few years.
Mm-hmm.
And I have. This part left was lot fourteen, right here.
Okay.
It was a big parcel, so I wanted that divided into these three lots.
Okay.
And this was lot thirteen here.
Okay.
This is part of fourteen. And this has been divided, thirteen is in the middle. It's been divided into three lots.
These, these are already sold?
No, they aren't sold, the out- the outside is sold.
Okay.
Thirteen and fourteen are available.
Okay.
So I had it divided into nine lots.
Gotcha, now, now.
They've all been perked.
Alright, okay.
And I don't know where to go after that.
And now, just in road front.
Yes, they do, they all, the road goes all around them. Right, right.
Either inside or on the perimeter of the road.
Mm-hmm, right, yep.
Excellent. Very nice. So we just need to know, what do I do next? So uh, we're gonna figure it out tonight.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. See. So you are of Margrop- Margroppon Road, right? Interesting. That's a nice location. Thank you.
Yeah, it's beautiful, yeah.
You tried to tell me a lot. Well, yeah, it really makes more sense to come and look at the map that brings the obligations. You guys still wanting to pass it to you here, Mr.?
I think Hans just went to make copies of the small.
Yeah.
I know, but anyways, it's very easy to watch it there.
Yeah.
The whole thing is still connected with the road. It's like a U, U-shaped road and the center is a lot. And then on the outside, the perimeter is a lot too, but.
So in our packet, it it's part of the soil, soils work, but uh, there is a group uh, map based on Google Earth uh, that. With your explanation, you know, kind of demonstrates that um. Where lot thirteen is located, where lot fourteen is uh, located. In relationship to the uh, road, now that we know that there's no new road proposed.
Yeah, so, so this one.
So this is all next to uh, Arnold Berry's bike?
Yes, I have no idea.
I have no feelings.
So that, then, it's a lot easier just to come here and do this. This this big lot thirteen is divided in three. And then uh, the fourteen is divided on this side in in another three. And then over here on the side, one, two, three, one. So she just make nine more. Yeah, this is what happened. This guy divided in three, this guy divided in three, and this guy divided in three. This one is divided in three, this one is divided in three, this one is divided in three, and all of it has to relax. So.
Yeah, I I walk it every night with my daughter.
Very good.
How's it ending up?
We're here.
The nice thing is, is it's cloud now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I live on eight, so I come down eight and I walk through that every last.
A lot of people.
There used to be the gate was there, so no cars could go in.
That was the only reason.
Right, because people were done.
We have to.
Yeah, I know.
Really? TVs, mattress, I don't know, we'll put a list.
So in case.
I never caught anybody, if I ever caught somebody.
Okay, in in case you guys have not noticed, I wanna go home by seven thirty today. So anyways, so we know what we're talking about, didn't we?
Good luck with that.
We know what we're talking about, we we need to do any further discussions?
Well, um, we need to, according to the ordinance, because of the addition of lots, we need to review. Go through the same process we would for a preliminary review of a of a subdivision, I mean, this is. Um, you know, fortunately, there's no road, so there's a lot of things that are not going to be applicable, but um. But that's the process we have to go through according to the uh, and that um.
So I'm.
We have to make a determination that the proposed revisions meet the standards of the ordinance, of course.
Okay, so how did we do the whole application?
Uh, I don't know that you have to read it, um, I, we have to review it if people haven't already, um, the uh.
So so let's go page by page, just for the full register, okay? Page number one. Subdivision and revision application of the town of Belgrade. Um, subdivision name is Stevens Farm. Name of the property owner is Bonnie Peck, it's a trust. The address, her address is two thirty-five Groundview Drive, Belgrade, Maine. Name of applicant, Bonnie Beck, again, same as above. Uh. Applicant is a corp- a corporation, that's a no, there, we should be uh, checking license in main that. Uh. That's a, that's an N A, isn't it, number three? What should we, what should we put next to an N A?
I don't know.
No, no corporation.
It's just a trust.
Okay, so just a trust, so what, number three, you're gonna put an N A next to it, not applicable. Name of applicant's authorized agent is N A two, it's empty. So it's not applicable, you guys coming, the owners coming over here to do it. So it's N A as well. Uh, name of uh, of the land surveyor is Burton and Associates. And they, these guys live in St. Albion. And their registration number is P L S twenty-one eighty-nine. Questions and address to, to which all correspondence regarding the application should go is Bonnie Beck. And we already disclosed her address. What legal interest does the applicant have in a property to be developed, they're the owner? The interest doesn't have uh, what interest does the applicant have in any aborting property, none? Land information. Uh, location of the property. Uh, found from the com- uh, the county register deeds is book. Eleven thousand three hundred forty-one, page two four, two hundred and seventy-three. On the tax map, the map is for fifteen, and the lots are thirty-six F dash thirteen and thirty-six F dash fourteen. If any portion of the property within the twenty-five feet, twenty, two hundred. Two hundred and fifty feet of the high water park or the pond river or stream, the answer is no. The acreage to be developed is sixteen point five seven acres. Indicate the nature of the respective. Indicate the nature of any restricted covenant replacing the deeds. I guess we'll have a copy of that in the application. Uh, this land being prior or prior approved subdivision, the answer is yes. Other, or other division within the uh, past five years, no. Identify sixteen uses of the land is residential. Does the parcel includes any water bodies, no. Is any portion of the property within the special flow. Harster area as identified by the federal management agency, the answer is no. These building names and mainly addresses of aborting properties owners and owners across the realm. And I'm gonna just read the names, alright? Francis Blasons, Carrie May, Merle Fisher, Wallace Stratton, Megan and Vince Roth. And Kevin Warren Hunt. This number of lots or units are gonna be done is nine lots. Anticipated date of construction, that's empty there. So you guys don't know when they might be developed.
Uh, as soon as it's approved. Yeah, it's approved.
Okay.
I mean, you're just selling the land, right?
Yeah, stolen.
Yeah.
Anticipated date of completion, we don't need that either, so both of them will be N A, cannot. Identify method of water supply to be proposed. To be the, to be the proposed development. It will be individual wells, right? Identify method of storage deposit disposal to the proposed development, it will be individual septic tanks. Identify the method of fire protection for the proposed development, and that was left blank. If that.
It'll be um, fire department, so other.
Other alternative, other alternative fire department. I'm making a note, or we have to add in the application.
Okay.
Okay. Does the applicant uh, propose to be uh, dedicate to pulling. To pull any roads, recreational common areas, and the answer is no. No roads, no recreation areas, and no common lands. Does the applicant intend to request waivers of any of the subdivision submission requirements? The answer is no. Submission. The pre-application sketch uh, flash chart show in simple sketch form. The proposed layout, street, lots, and other features in relation, in relation to the existing condition. That's exactly what we have here. We have sketch plan, which may be a freehand pencil sketch, should be supplemented with general information. To describe the outline. Or the outline, the asset conditions of the site and proposed development. It is recommended that the sketch plan be superimposed or accompanied by a copy of the accessory map. We have that here, anyway. accessory map. So it's the fundamental. Yes.
That's true.
We hope you will have.
This is what's.
Okay, great, great. And uh. So that came from three oh?
No, it's in, um, yes.
Okay.
Whatever our G I S program.
Yeah, so that's good. So then the uh, sketch plan show uh, give me a portion of the U S O S topographic map. I didn't saw that, maybe you have it in place.
No, I was supposed to print that, but I didn't. I get it.
Okay, I'll read that. And then map of the area showing outline of proposed subdivision unless. The proposed division is less than ten acres and you hit it right there, you're nine. No, it was an acres, no lots. So sixteen, so we need, we need a map of the area showing the outline, we had that, that's, that's the same, that's the same map there.
Hans, this, this has. A couple of lines on it.
Does it?
Yeah.
It shows all these.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
There we go. So we all covered that. So then uh. We have a corrective declaration of covenants and restrictions. Uh, for the Stevens farm subdivision. We have a record of that here. Then we have a site evaluation and source analysis for the septic susceptibility. And we have a site evaluation and source analysis, and we're done.
I have two questions on the application, uh. First, um, this is a revision. The original, Hans provided us with this information by email, uh. The uh, first was uh, approved in two thousand and four, and the applicant was, was different than you folks, it was uh, Steve Foster. So this, to bring this up to date, that uh, we need to make it clear for the record that this is a, a change in ownership as well. Even though the ownership happened in what, two thousand and five?
Yeah.
Uh, so that, we need to, you know, bring our records up to snuff, um. On that account, so.
Well, I thought they were brought up today, because we, you know, we went through a lawyer for the sale. Yeah, the transfer from Steve and uh.
Yeah, there is a deed in there, so.
To us.
Yeah, and I think I put the book and page down there.
Okay, so that'll be sufficient?
Yeah, they had, we were very confident the deeds, so the ownership of the land.
Okay, alright. The uh, second is, uh, question I had is, uh, under. The notifications on question seventeen, this, this application is actually incorrect, uh, it isn't a butters, it's uh, landowners within five hundred feet. Uh, this is from the old ordinance, uh, uh, pre-two thousand twenty-two ordinance. Um, and as best I can tell, quickly looking, there's only one person that's been missed. Uh, somebody by the name of Swan. Pamela and Aaron Swan, all the others are the landowners within five hundred feet. And that's actually the town's obligation, not theirs. Under the ordinance.
Yeah, I think so.
Just like.
That's that new house.
So we said there, we're gonna add it up, isn't it?
Yeah, so notices need to go.
All of them.
To all of them.
Close the swan. Close the swan.
Okay, plus the uh, Pamela and Aaron Swan.
That's the new house that, that lot, right?
Oh, yeah, I thought that was the one on the road, yeah, that's lot twelve, eleven or twelve, yeah, right, okay.
But do we get, we send us to all that letter already?
So with the ordinance, the, the makes that the town's obligation, not your obligation to provide those notifications?
No, they provide the addresses.
What's that?
They just provide the addresses.
Right.
Yeah, the patient.
Right, so we need to add one to that list, you know? They're the. I gave it out the lot number.
Thirty, thirty-six F eleven, I believe.
No. Yeah, that's right next door, right? May, that's.
No, May, May, May's on this side, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right next door to you, on, on the same, it's right on the uh, street, right next door, the property, it's to the left, right? Is that right?
Hmm, yeah, it's on the left.
Yeah, no, I, I think all the others have been, are on the application, it's just the, the Swans. That need to be added for the town's notification.
So we Pamela and Eric, Aaron Swan.
Yeah, slide, I think thirty-six F eleven, if you want to put it down, but.
Where is it again, says um. I'm trying to say the name of the lot here.
Yeah, thirty-six F eleven.
Thirty-six.
Tax map.
F eleven.
Yeah, lot thirty-six F eleven.
Oh, here it is, yeah, yeah, you're right, it's on here, yeah, tax map, I'm fifteen, yep, thank you. And it's uh. Uh, does, does anybody can figure out the uh. The acreage or the address to it, you will. Um, I cannot pick it up from here.
Well, we don't have that.
We're, we're right there.
We do have the address, it's for.
We have, we're gonna look them up anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about that here.
Okay, then, any other concern, question?
I have just a question.
I have just a question. So we don't have the original application in front of us, but were these lots designed to be that size in a condition of the original application, like a common ground? But it's not a common ground, because it doesn't make a percentage of unbuiltable ground. So it's the original application saying that these lots have to stay this size, I mean, the original subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's excellent question.
So is it stated that the reason why they approved it is because of lax laws rather than the common ground? And my subdivision, I had a common ground. That was unbuiltable.
Right, right, so this is part of that, or?
My own question.
Yeah, sure.
That's a good question.
I'm not spoiling anything like to that, but you can do it yourself.
You have the original plot point? It was approved.
It looks like, it looks like that right here. So we, we writing up, not, not writing here. Over there.
Yeah.
It's not good, it's a common ground. Label something, so.
Well, there's no designation.
No, it wasn't in the minutes, so.
There's nothing mentioned.
We didn't even own that land in the middle. I meant original land, they only owned those first outside lots. We bought them two big ones later.
That's true.
So we didn't say we had them built then.
So oh, this is for phosphorus control. There's a note here, apartment area of open space. Phosphorus wildlife buffer equals eight point one acres, nineteen percent. But I don't know where, I can't tell where that, oh, here it is.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Uh, oh, this is just a note, it doesn't show you where. Open space, another note, open space phosphorus wildlife buffer are to be maintained in their natural state, allowing only the removal of hazardous. Well, I think it's supposed to said hazardous trees. Owners of lots which are part of this area will be responsible for the maintaining and assurance that these areas remain in their natural state forever. Any alteration to this plan of the management must be approved by the town of Belgrade Planning Board. So the question is, where?
Wouldn't be a total, total area to divvy up between the lots?
I don't see anything to be talking about that. Yeah. No, there's to be.
Um, well, it's a condition of this plot plan, which is in the registry of deeds.
Oh, it's under the deed?
Well, yeah, it should, would be attached to the deed.
That's right.
Uh, so it, it should be eight point one acres in of, of the totally area that should be in this open space designation.
No, you need to get a current documentation from the venture deeds. For the A attack.
Well, this, this was, this is it, this is, oh, no, that's his professional stamp, nevermind.
Register things down at the, down at the uh where he said he'd make it legal.
I don't know if it's any help to the board, but we originally just purchased the first twelve acres from Steve.
Mm-hmm.
And then four or five years down the road, that's when we purchased lots.
Yeah, lots thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen. So we didn't buy the whole parcel at one time.
Okay.
We bought it in two segments.
Two segments.
I don't know if that's any help, Dave.
Um, so I'm not sure we're being clear or I'm being clear, but as Craig mentioned, the the town's ordinance, going back to the nineteen eighties, has always had a requirement that for any new subdivision, fifteen percent of the area be set aside as open space.
I understand.
And in, in this case, they, they did that, it's just that we can't figure out where are the eight point one acres is that was designated, and so.
Lots designated, but I don't know how many acres they have.
Great.
Are there, are there deed restrictions?
Yes.
That um limit how much clearing a new landowner can do?
Not at this point. We do have a plan, but um, let's see, the plan, the road plan. Because half of that development has asphalt in it already.
Mm-hmm.
The other half doesn't.
Mm-hmm.
They have three quarters of the total that are necessary to complete the development. Those haven't been put in. So uh, we are not even clear, and I can't get a direct answer. Are we gonna be responsible, or is the home association gonna be responsible for it? We don't know at this point, so we figure we take one step at a time.
Yeah.
Get the, the lots.
Cause I, I don't know, maybe, maybe you do, um, but it almost appears to me like they didn't really, usually it's like one part of the subdivision just designate, this is open space, it's off limits for development. At least that's the ones I can remember seeing back in the day when I was on the planning board earlier. Um, the, in this case, it seems to be we're gonna achieve this on the entire acreage of the subdivision, and the only way to do that would be with some kind of deed restriction on clearing and development, and I guess that's what we would need to see.
This is indicate nature of any restrictive covenants to be placed in the deed. Only mature trees to be cut and phosphorus buffers, only hazards to be removed. Screen and buffers. Unsafe home only to be placed on lots.
Yeah, but that still doesn't.
But it's saying that it has buffers, and it has.
It's sort of what, what.
Does it show buffers or?
No.
A total.
It talks about it, but it doesn't say what.
Yeah, it just, let, let me show it straight so we can see it personally. So there's this note, and then this note, but I, I can't find, maybe you can, but I couldn't find anything there.
What was the percentage?
Uh, well, it comes to eight point one acres. And they had designated nineteen percent rather than fifteen, so they were designated more.
Yeah.
I think to meet the phosphorus runoff standard.
So could you do nineteen percent of every lot?
We're looking at the original approval. And.
This new map has got some buffers on it. I don't know how many acres it is.
Why didn't I think of that?
So this says sketch plan only possible to be managed, farm property made dated October tenth, two thousand long. Says referred to earlier survey plans of this property, no?
There are two lots that are being proposed to be divided. This one, the big one on the top, it's up on the screen there.
Hmm. Yeah.
Three acres. This other one be divided is six point two acres, so they did not create eight point one in any form or fashion.
I don't know, I'll ask Chris.
But to answer Craig's question, we kind of need to know where this open space buffer area is, so that we know we're not approving something that impinges on it. Or if the plan originally was that it would be scattered, you know, there would be limitations on, they were gonna achieve that eight point one acres by limiting how much clearing and, and development was gonna happen on each and every lot. Then we'd need to see, you know, the deed restriction that makes that happen. Now, there is on that here, as uh, Mr. Peck mentioned, there is one area, small area designated as a twenty foot um, veget- vegetated strip for phosphorus uh, control, right on this one lot, but that's the, oh, here, here.
This one over here, I think.
One is over here.
Yeah, there's one over here, I know, because I talked to the person who wanted to buy it, and we discussed that. And cause I didn't.
So whether have a hard time believing that's eight point one acres in total, but maybe there's more that I'm still not finding.
Now, is that whole lot, see, one, one and a half, and
yeah, right. I'm, I'm guessing there's more of this, you know, on some of these other lots.
I have.
Yeah, on the, if you look on the west side, it says right here, open space phosphorus.
Right.
Buffer down there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that whole line is all right here buffer.
Yeah, and racing along here too, but I can't find anything comparable elsewhere.
Yeah, just right here, then I think it's that.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, 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 that's right here. Yep.
But that.
You guys got it.
But the question is.
Is that eight point one acres?
Yeah, is that eight point one acres? I doubt it.
Uh, can you, can you measure? The, feel here, mark it a measure?
And it's like the elevation of drainage and all that stuff. I don't know if that would be included on that map. I could bring that down the hands and, and.
Yeah.
I, you know, it's got all, all the engineer stuff on it.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know.
Well, may, maybe we could figure out um, how much, how much acres this is.
Oh, yeah.
It, it, this area is here, that, that stretch, that twenty foot strip this way, and then all this area here, and that, that, that's not an acre.
No, but I was saying, we could, we could figure out, you know, how much acres that.
I mean, this, this much here is about six acres, this is about six acres, and this is about six acres.
Right.
So to be eight acres, that's three, a strip looking that is big.
Right, no, that's what, what I was saying is if we figured out this acreage here, we found out this acreage here, add those together on that. Subtract eight point one, and divvy up between every lot.
Line is shown, and it's labeled.
So that
Buffer strip.
Between this strip and that there, it not even having a.
Here, the twenty.
I'll tell you that one.
Right, but, but it is buffer. If it's, if it's nineteen percent, if you did, if you, if you, if you set aside nineteen percent of every lot.
Then it goes up the side.
That can't be touched here.
Okay, so that, that, that's it, that's how they achieve.
You figure it out, nineteen percent is gonna be, you, you take one lot, you cross it into four pieces.
Well, if you cut, cut it into five pieces.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's dice it.
Cause that's. That'd be twenty-five percent.
That's right.
Yeah, it's a little, well, comes down.
Very close.
Yeah.
Maybe in this lot, this area, I thought it was there. But not here. And not here.
Well, properties that already have, I mean, that, that would be, that property, that, that one lot right there would have more.
This lot I make it, but this, this one is not wanna be.
Sarah.
Oh, wait.
This map's got a lot more details, you know, what's leading over. And this, this line.
Yeah.
This big
Right here.
Circle here.
Same thing here.
Yeah. And then it goes upside the road. And then around, and around, so basically borders. I think we're all set.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let, let me just show you though, okay, we're all on the same page. Cause this is the original approval, which is still, you know, is still um and also the other four numbers. So what Craig found was, you can hold the other end. Is that, you know how on, you, on your, on this drawing, this is shown.
Yeah.
And this is shown.
Right.
What this original shows is that the buffer extends along the entire perimeter
Oh.
of the subdivision. So um it really doesn't impact these.
It's them.
The center lots, uh, it only impacts
Yeah.
this lot.
Yep.
Uh, and, 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 and these. Uh, I think.
Yeah, so the, so then the only lots on there.
It carries, it carries from there here. It carries over.
Right, so the only lots that are affected on, on this subdivision would be that one, this one, that one, a little bit of that one. A little bit of this.
Yeah.
The rest is all down here.
And so that's why it's only, that's all that's shown there.
Yeah, right now, yeah, no.
So Nick, don't you think that's the reason why that's all, all, only shown on that?
Yeah.
Cause that's all, that's in plenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
G I S would have known that.
Yeah, well, thank God they did. Alright, that was a long way to answer my question. You want, you want to see this?
So whatever's marked there, your friend is here too.
Yeah, it's, um, so the.
You've got five lots in total that have that buffer.
Had this buffer, yeah.
Hey.
Here. We want, uh, here. It's, it's that broken line. This lot's actually the impacted the greatest, then around the entire perimeter, but on this drawing, it only shows it on the lots that are impacted by the change. And that's why it, that's why it doesn't look like eight point one acres on here.
It's already translated, it's translated.
Yeah, yeah. It's just bringing lots that. Okay, alright.
What's money?
So, uh. So where we looking here?
Are we good?
You're good? It is you.
Um I'm good, once the notice, notifications have been provided.
Mr. Baker. You're good, which is the Carol.
Yeah.
We're good? So I guess what, what we do now, we.
Send letters.
We send letters, and that's it, we're good?
Well, I, I think, I don't think we can make a decision tonight to.
Well, it's gonna be a public hearing type thing, right?
That's right, yeah.
Well. It, yeah, a meeting, yeah. We could hold a public hearing, it's sort of at our option, I don't see why, but.
Yeah, we don't think we need to, but it's, they need to be notified and
Even do it.
Let them know.
And they come back.
And then we vote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a revision, it's not a new subdivision, so.
Right.
Even the letters could be a butters, it's only an approved subdivision, so it's kind of just a courtesy.
Uh, actually, no, it isn't, because the ordinance requires us to use the same procedure as you, if you're, um reviewing the, doing the preliminary review of a major subdivision. And a lot of, you know, they have everything that that review requires already covered, with the exception of that notice. Uh, and, and in my view, that's why the notices are required.
So is it a hearing or just?
No, I think it should just, firstly, I think it should just be our normal meeting that's open to the public, if some, one of the, uh, uh, landowners within five hundred people wanna show up, fine. If they don't, fine.
So just notify the ones with the five hundred feet, um, then we have a meeting.
It would be discussed immediately.
Yeah.
So then next meeting, we just make a vote, and that's it. So, uh, uh, just, can they just join, resume something? Do they have to be here for that's been?
Um, well, I my preference, I know it, it's kind of an inconvenience for you, would be for you to be here, because if there's, you gotta show us stuff on the map or something.
Oh, absolutely, we're only two miles, only two miles.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be no problem.
I, I usually, I will try to reconsider to you guys, but if you guys wanna be here, you guys are welcome. Alright.
So Sarah, I wanna bring to your and everybody else's attention, uh procedural, uh, challenge.
Okay.
We have to make findings a fact in law. We have no form for doing that under this ordinance.
So we have to get that from next time.
Yeah, and the, the review criteria are the ones that are in states, state law. And it, it starts on page four of the ordinance, the statute or the review criteria. I mean, they're pretty basic. The. I don't think they're gonna have any problems meeting them. Uh, but you need to document that so that our decision isn't, you know, easily overturned. Um.
So.
If you would like, I think. But, uh, then I could have a draft that, for people to review at the next meeting.
Sure.
Kind of on the fly here, but. I mean, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be simple compared to the ones we got.
Sure.
Go for it, boys.
So, Mr. Shil, you can take on that. That is so great. I really, I really appreciate it. And then what we'll do is the first part of the meeting, we kind of, uh, we approve the draft. Would that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be first.
And then hopefully approve it. So we can use that, that same meeting. Not exactly how a government's supposed to work, but anyway. Good enough for.
Efficiently.
Yeah, efficiently, yeah. It's not. We can't have any of that.
Can you circulate the draft by email?
Again, yeah, I will.
Are you one of you?
Yes, I will.
All right.
Comment on it for some role.
So I guess we have a plan for next, two, in two weeks.
Uh, okay, I have a question. Do we have to do anything to help you or this is given to you within the board?
No, yeah, I think, I think it's all in our side of the board.
I, I. My personal feeling is you provided us with the information we need.
Okay.
Uh. The notification of, um, landowners within five hundred feet is our obligation, not yours and, uh, and. I think, um, you know, barring. New information coming forward next time, um, we'll be able to process, finalize the processing.
I, you know, I will need to, if I had to get some of my, uh, you know, a lawyer or something like that.
Yeah.
I just keep it simple. Uh, I had a business, keep it simple.
Yeah.
I wish I could do it very simple.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Lord, that's fine.
I, I just got one question. The, uh. The, uh, the D here. We have, is that the most current, you know, of?
What's the only one?
Yeah, I know. You've been down to the. You've been down to Virginia D there in Kenneb County and just check with them, see if any other attachment, so the D. Just go down and check it out.
Well, I.
Well, you did it.
Yeah.
But hopefully they did a good job. Yeah.
Well, that's what they get paid for. That's why.
Produce some fee as it's screwed up yet.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you, you can do that if you want. You get out of the D, you get out of the D themselves instead of seeing you. And probably that's all.
Exactly what they would need now.
You just go to the Virginia D, you call the lawyer.
Yeah.
As well, you do it yourself, it's around Virginia D. And, 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 and see the, uh, the Virginia D person down there and they give me the book of pages and all that stuff and the. And ask them, are there any other attachments to the gorgeous?
And to this problem.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's why your lawyer does.
That's all.
That's fine. We, we had that. That's easy.
Yeah.
I, I. If you wanna do one check it, but I, I think that's what you guys paid the lawyer for, so.
I personally feel we have everything we need to move forward with.
If it, if it's more comfortable, that's fine. It will just make phone call.
All right. Just wanna let you know that if we, out of the five. Four, we're comfortable with it. You guys wanna do that, that's fine. But.
Whatever you need.
Yeah, so, uh, that's said, are we all set? You know, good? So, um. We'll see you in two weeks.
Two weeks. Yeah, very good.
Yeah, and, and, uh.
We'd like to thank you for your help.
Sure.
And, uh. You've been very good, very efficient. Thank you. When we'll be there.
Now, one, one last thing, just, just a last thought for you.
Fine.
Do, just a last thought for you. Saving you a trip to the D, uh, office in Augusta. Maybe you can call and verify everything from the document you have.
Yes.
Just call ahead. And said, this is the D I have. I just wanna verify that this is the only D for this property. And they might be able to do a reform.
And they can.
We actually gotta call into my lawyer for another. Problem, so. Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Yeah. I used to work, be more work for you either, so that's all. Excellent.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Nice seeing you both. So, uh. Do we wanna take a bathroom break here? I'm in.
How long it's good? No, no, it's entertainment. Yeah. Keeps us from drinking.
Drinking water?
Yeah, that's, that's a hybrid. It definitely needs to hydrate.
Yeah. Seems like them. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll show you that tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be really cold. Yeah, it's just a little skim of ice on the pond right now. That's all.
Yeah, take care. Sarah, email, um, see you in February. Make that we didn't have to.
And a lot of people do on this. I know a couple guys that do this on the van and bring everybody from.
Yeah, 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 right. Always been a very number of people from Bogers work there.
Yeah.
What happened to you?
No, I'm gonna be there for. And I'm gonna keep a job as possible in nine years. Yeah. Nine. So job, yeah.
Wow.
Three hundred eighty million.
It's kind of at the end. It seems like they're.
I haven't seen her. No, I haven't even, I haven't even looked at the point. I haven't even seen the plans. I just know it's the phase, like three different phases. Each phase is like roughly about three days. So they're down there now, demoing and pouring concrete and getting ready. For us.
That, and those big ships take about two years to build.
Yeah. I've never been, but I heard it's quite. Quite a place. It's, it's, it's tough getting in and out of there if you worked there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Boy, when, when there's a, um, shift change.
Yeah.
Just, you know, as a driving around town, it's a challenge.
Yeah. Well, and, and because it's so, it's so high security, like the parking areas, I guess, are like.
Yeah.
Off, you know, and they shadow you, so you gotta wait for your shuttle and then. I just, if you ride a motorcycle, you can get up pretty close and get out of there fairly quick.
That's like a good solution.
And it's a beautiful ride from there, all, you know. Pretty much all back road.
Yeah, no, it is. That's correct.
Down there?
Down there.
After year again, anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be going down, I don't like.
And, and what's up?
I already have one.
Are you?
Yeah. Harley.
Are you?
Yeah. No, shot failed, so, uh, two thousand eight, uh, nine.
Well, you. Yeah, or know where it is. I've never been there. I like, I really.
I've done a lot of stuff.
They have like a gift shop and then they got this room where all the apples are and stuff. One whole wall, there's nothing. And they're all like the dairy machine. They're huge. They're just actually monsters. Apples. It was impressive. It was really impressive.
I've done. I think that was, that's the best thing I bought recently.
Oh, good, yeah. Yeah, I, I tried to. Get some old apple trees growing again on my property. It looked like a while, like you said, a program where they isn't too bad, but, um, still do probing on. I tried.
I'd like to get a, uh, a roll.
So. You wanna recall me? All right. So we're back business here. We have done new business, all of it, A and B. And we're moving on to all business. Uh, we, uh, what I've suggested is to skip the subdivision checklist for now and go directly to the Legan National Resources Committee of Recommendations. On the shoreline zone ordinance, so we can take care of Mr. Donahue and Mr. Bradley. So, uh, last meeting, the board agreed. That we wanna, uh, create language. To incorporate number one of their recommendations. Is that, is that a good recall?
Well, I, I thought we were gonna focus in on that because it seemed like a.
An issue.
It might be the easiest and, uh, to do. I still have questions, but.
Okay, so, um. There was an email circulating back. About, from, from them, um, asking to please that besides that one, we consider number twelve. We only went from one to six. We never read over number twelve. And basically, number twelve is about. Uh, exactly what we were doing today, uh, uh, telling the board that something is happening. So I, I personally think that. That should be an issue one too, but I don't know how the, the rest of the board feel and all that.
I don't like it.
And that would be why, why?
Why? Cause. I'm old school, uh. We own our properties and we have property rights. And it doesn't involve you.
Okay.
Unless it's something linked.
Okay.
And. If it's major and commercial in a shoreline zone, then we already have the abiding.
Mm-hmm.
Notification.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's got something to do with your house. It's none of my business.
Hmm.
So. Maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but I understand this is to be an accurate fact. Notice or, or providing, uh, abiding landowners with a copy of the permit. Uh. Not so much so they can or cannot choo-, uh, choose to, uh, participate in the process. They could already could do that now. Uh, assuming they knew about it, but, uh, and paying attention kind of thing to the town website and that kind of stuff, but that. The language is, uh, all permits issued by the town for property that's being suggested is for permits issued by the town. The properties within the shoreline zone require notification to abiding landowners. Notice will be. Uh, include a copy of the approved permit. Do I, am I misunderstanding that?
No, I think you're right, George. It's after the, and we're not suggesting that abiding landowners would be part of the process. Of, of reviewing a permit. After it's done. Send them a copy of it and it, um, in the, we've seen that in my lifetime, I've seen that many times where, um. Somebody's doing something in the shoreline zone and. Um, the CEO may not be aware of. I mean, I can think of that. I, I can, you know, think of the time when my brother-in-law, you know, saw something going on that was, uh, a clear violation and. And called the CEO and he came in and, and, uh, rectified the situation. So it's more that, um, there's also stuff goes on where people build. Things that are larger than, than they're permitted for. And. Um, man, I think it's just because of the sensitivity of the water quality in the lakes. Um, to have. People informed of what's happening in a sensitive area next door. Um. So they can, uh. You know, not be confused, not call up, say. On, you know, and ask him what's going on. I mean, you know, it's, I, I think it's, um. It's only because of. The sensitivity of the water quality. That's it.
Now, I'm in favor of it as a watchdog type thing because. We have a case now that I'm having to handle where somebody was permitted to put a foundation under their. Cabin. Well, when they did that, they also put a foundation under their bunkhouse. And then they had a plumbing, bathroom, kitchen, so they had two houses. Where they hid the heat of the water. So that was done. Years ago. But there's only one permit in the file that's not for a bunkhouse.
And that was brought to your attention by, uh.
No, I found it myself, but if the neighbors were aware of what's supposed to be going on, the scope of the project, and they saw something else that's happening. They can.
I mean, that's a violation already, bro. I know it's.
Yeah, but it's the idea that the neighbors can see it and it may come to.
So then we get more neighbors against neighbors.
Right.
That's inciting more.
We're checking with each other, I'm correct. That we're checking with each other. That we're doing the right thing.
I would say, and nothing against code officers, but I think generally, most of the violations that were. Turned in to me at D E P regarding shore and zoning, came from neighbors or the public. More so than the code officer finding it. So that if you're looking for compliance. That's not a bad thing.
Yeah, I, I, I actually like the idea of having more eyes out there, um. And not having people speculate so much about what may or may not have been approved. By the fact that they, uh, know what. By having a copy of the permit, what their neighbor. Did have approved and that they did get approval.
Right.
And not jumping to the conclusion that they didn't, um, and, um. Uh, and if that would improve, it would seem to me that would improve, um, kind of take compliance. To the next level, you know, which is, I think, a good thing in my mind.
So they can't come into the town office if they're interested in what's going on. They can't come into the town office and inquire about it and get a copy of the permit?
They can.
All right, we got them. All set.
Well, not really, uh, uh, Frank, because for instance, this past summer I have people call me, cause people think I can come without. Baton and hammer, uh, uh, hands over it. They call me and said, listen, this is going next door to me. What's going on? This person is doing this and I wasn't allowed to do this. So it, the fact that the information is out there to then write off. Just. Came me myself out of the loop into it. Because they were informed that next door, there's gonna be this construction. It was approved and there's a permit. They don't have to call to say, oh. That, that's not allowed. How come it's not allowed? Well, you know what? Here's the permit. We send it to you. So that's already taken care of right from the get-go. And I, I think. A lot of the phone calls that came that summer, at least I got. Four or five at home. If that system will be in, it will chunk my time. And the whole summer I spent at least. Maybe something in the ballpark of twenty-eight hours. Calming people on the phone.
As I can say is woodland, yeah, or, um.
And, and, and everything was permitted. Okay, but people call and they get made upset and.
Many meetings we have with those people in here. Or. I.
But what you mean, I, I don't, I didn't get that correct. What you mean by that?
I don't wanna mention names. So the neighbors coming in.
Oh, that was one, that was one, one site. I'm telling you about different other sites.
I don't. My answer is still, my vote's still gonna be no, but.
That's fine. I understand.
Well, but don't the others have to get notified when, if something's happening anyways?
No.
No.
It's none of their business.
That's, that's what they.
In shoreline zone, though.
No.
No.
It's none of their business.
The, the, uh, it actually in two thousand eighteen, the last time we updated the ordinance in a comprehensive way in response to the two thousand fourteen. Comprehensive plan, we had this very debate. Um, at that point, it was suggested in the comprehensive plan, it is suggested in the comprehensive plan that. Um. Abiders be notified in advance, you know, at the time. um, abiders be notified in advance, you know, at the time, like with other permits, like with commercial development, et cetera, subdivision. Uh, the uh, and and the board, the majority of the board decided that they didn't wanna do that. Um, and so that's why it's still not, and 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 the state uh minimum, you know, uh ordinance does require.
Yeah, that's just commercial and subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I would agree that the advanced portion of thing is not really, once the the board approve what is gonna be built, then we we inform people. And a year is basically is after the, actually I didn't pick that up, after the permit is issued, then we inform the abiders. So the abiders will kind of come and say, oh, no, that that permit cannot happen. No, no, that permit is already there. We just want, you was giving you the authority for letting you know that this landowner can do this and we permitting it. So just be aware, that's all. It's a, it's sort of, sort of a awareness call. Not, not that you're gonna come to the town and overturn the permit or go to the, to your neighbors and say, oh, you can do this and you cannot do that. You know, it's just aware.
Alright, so I guess you essentially are indicating that after the permit is given out, that a copy of the permit is mailed to the neighbors. Buddy David, this is shoreline zoning, right?
That's right.
Okay, that's, that's not a problem. You know, I, that seems fair enough, but Cr- Craig is basically saying during the application process.
No, that's not what, what we asked him. It's after.
Permit's already available. They see something going on, they can come. Why are you trying to pit neighbor against neighbor saying, oh, this is what they can do. Watch them, make sure they're doing it.
No, we don't say that.
Well, that's, that's the intention, and those words were just said, watchdog.
Well.
And they were just said. So don't tell me you're not doing that. That's exactly what you're promoting.
It is the intent.
It's the intent of the whole thing, to be a watchdog, to watch your neighbor, to make sure they're not doing anything wrong.
Well, is it cool that your neighbor come and get away with doing stuff that is not in the permit? And after it's done, we have.
So do you want everybody watching you as you're driving down the street, reporting your speeding, to report, you know? There's a point where you gotta draw a line of turning people against people. Neighbor against neighbor and notify.
You think, you think that will happen, yes? Just you.
It already happened.
Look what you done with the summer.
Well.
Come on, I mean, what are you?
That was five bone holes.
Okay, and that, and that was without uh uh noticing, making the notice.
But they knew it. Even after they knew it, they kept complaining, how could this be allowed? It went on, you know.
Well, that, that.
Went to.
I think that's another issue.
Yeah, that's a different issue. They're not recommending that we get the authority to do lobotomies, okay?
Right.
I mean, that's human nature. People like to piss and moan.
Just, you know, looking at how to, how can we keep the water quality in the lakes to be as good as we can and enforcing the ordinance is a community effort. I mean, it is. It already is happening. I've seen it happen and and um I think this transparency is a good thing, I think. I don't, I don't think it pits neighbor against neighbor. I don't think this is gonna make it worse. I would think this would make it better, frankly.
Uh, I've been sitting in here when people are in here, so.
Now, can I say just one more thing? And I don't try to go to uh uh be pushing on you, Ken, just one, just a thought I have. For instance, if, and it's the, the, the opposite view of of where you're coming from. I'm not, I don't try to uh win a big, a busy match. My thing is that, for instance, we have this stiff uh case that came to us. And you guys permitted, we was permitted to do a bunkhouse with no cooking appliances and so on. So let's say that permit would be to the waters. When they start making the Taj Mahal that I did, they will come right over to the town, not after it was already built. After it's already built, it's difficult to undo it.
We permitted that size, so how?
But not, not, not a kitchen, not a kitchen.
How are they in there?
Well, I'll tell you when, when the.
They're gonna.
When, when, when fourteen pull in, when they started getting all these boxes that I noticed is a stove, was it? What is it? And if people were not permitted a, 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 a kitchen? And of course, that's watching. It's exactly what you're saying that you don't want in this neighborhood, in our, in our community.
I think you're promoting uh juju, so bring it to a vote, do whatever you need to do. I've heard enough discussion for me.
All right, so anybody else wanna pitch in? Is this you?
No.
Okay, do you guys wanna do a vote on this?
We have to.
Cause they're gonna go vote with.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should take a, a vote on it. I mean, I would make a motion that we um draft, they uh come up with a draft.
Sound check.
For a final vote. Uh, you know, basically taking the next incremental step, which is to take language that has been suggested and actually put it into the um, you know, underline it in in into the appropriate section, which I I agree is sixteen uh uh D at the end of sixteen D, you know.
To move forward though, first.
Pardon?
Said move, move, move vote.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm suggesting, that because if a preliminary vote fails, then there's no sense wasting our time uh doing, doing a drafting. So I I guess I would make that motion, uh, you know, a preliminary vote on whether or not to proceed with the, this recommendation and the language that's been suggested.
Okay, and you wanna second it?
I'll second.
All right, so we're gonna go. Any other question before we go to the vote? No? Okay, this is a car.
Yes.
Mister uh, Sergeant.
Yes.
Mister Seale.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
All right.
And me, Sarah, I guess, I will guess, so it's four in favor, not a, a one opposed. So the motion carries. All right, so with that said, I think uh you know already that we're gonna be working on the number one.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be working on number twelve.
Right. Oh, so you're gonna work, work on one at a, at a.
And two.
Another time or?
No, we're working, we're working on those two, on creating language for number one and number twelve to be included, so we can vote on it, the town will vote on it in March.
Right.
And then in February, we will table the rest of the other uh suggestions to them.
So we have not voted on number one.
No.
Oh, never mind. That's right.
And as I said, I I still have some questions. I I still need to be convinced that this is adding value to the ordinance and and that it's gonna promote uh better protection for um lake water quality, given the response that we've gotten from Colin Clark to my question.
Okay.
Um, and I, hopefully both of you have seen.
We've read it. I I'm, wasn't quite, I mean, my interpretation was, he said that we're already doing this. Um, but it's not a bad idea to to have a, a town permit required, or or is that?
Um, I didn't think he went that far. Uh, he, I, he didn't weigh in one way or the other.
Oh.
I, I don't think uh, uh, he, he, he said that yes or no, or I would recommend it or not recommend it. Uh, it, for me, it's, if we add a permit requirement for everything that falls under the Natural Resources Protection Act that we or Hans then have to review and mo- or have to review most of, how does that move the ball further, uh, uh, you know, down the road uh in terms of water quality? Um, the question I asked in abbreviated terms of Colin Clark, who's the State Shoreland Zoning Coordinator, was um do, do, do your, does your program and does uh coordinate with the uh uh Natural Resources Protection Act program staff review the PBRs? They manage the PBRs and review the uh permit applications that are big enough so that they don't, they don't qualify for a permit by rule? And the answer is that, yeah, they do, uh, and apparently it, uh, they work quite closely. And he receives uh anytime there's any question of whether there's a shoreline, uh, uh, something, an application that they receive that may trigger shoreline zoning, they, they bring it to him for him to review. And if he thinks it, it's likely, he contacts either the town clerk or the code enforcement officer, depending on the town. Not all towns have code enforcement officers. So the question I have is, if we're already receiving those notices or we should be receiving those notices, how does adding another layer of permitting requirement improve that? How is that an improvement on that? Cause it seems to me, and please, I want you folks to correct me if I got the wrong end of the stick here. The intent of this or the, of goal of this is to ensure that there aren't projects that are getting DEP approval that may pose, say, a soil erosion contr- uh hazard or some other kind of water quality hazard to the lakes that um, that um, the, also needs a shoreline zoning uh approval. And uh they're somehow falling between the cracks. And it doesn't sound like that's happening. Uh, at least there's a, a good process at DEP to uh ensure it doesn't happen. So I, I guess I need to be convinced that this is an improvement.
George, I think what, uh, looking back with Colin Rokey, he, he kind of wound up his summary that uh it would be helpful if he, you know, local, the town's code enforcement officer weighs in on stuff. You know, and that.
He, he said bo- both, the, those permits have a standard or condition in them stating that they will likely need a local permit. So folks at this point should realize if they get a NRPA permit, they also need a shoreline zoning permit. Um, but that's, I mean, I, I don't know that that's saying that it should be in our ordinance, if it's.
Well, isn't that your recommendation, though?
Well, well, that's, yeah, I mean, we are. And Hans, Hans had pushed this forward.
It's not for permits, it's for review. If they get issued in PBR, then it come to the code officer for a review to see if a permit is required. Because yes, some of these are falling through the cracks, where someone will go out and get a permit to, to do something that would require a permit. But they're assuming it doesn't because they already got one from the state, so they just move forward.
Right.
So in those instances, well, that's happened, Hans, um, what was the cause of that breakdown? Cause it sounds like that was either a breakdown at the DEP or it's a breakdown in the town office.
No, that could be.
I had a signal issue back, and it's been thirteen years since I was there, fourteen. So things may have changed a lot, but I would say that my biggest, not my biggest problem, but one of the problems was staff had issued permits and they weren't familiar with the shoreline zoning standards for what, they weren't real well versed in them, and had issued a permit, and somebody would complain and then had to get the town involved, COTOS, or trying to enforce the ordinance. And so, well, DEP said we could do it, so, but like I said, that was fourteen years ago.
Yeah, as evidence, I've, when I started here, I was getting no notices period. And I looked in the email, I searched for permit by rules, none came up. So I coordinated with Cameron, I started with NERPA, and asked to be put on the list, and you know, they, they, you know, replied, they did everything I asked. But the way it came to a head was I found an excavator pulling rocks and stumps off of a berm, an ice berm pushed up to smooth it out so they could put riprap in there. It was a Seven Lakes Alliance project. And I made him copy on every piece of paper he sent to DEP. And through that experience with NERPA and Cohen, now I get PBRs. But putting this request, the note or then the ordinance for review when one is issued is just kind of another catch gap to, that I do see them. I don't care if I'm getting duplicates, at least I know they're there. It's embarrassing for someone to call me and say, hey, there's an excavator here pulling dirt out of the water. And I know nothing about it. It happened last week in the village.
Hmm.
But I knew it was the driving, uh, hydrant power department. So that was not too embarrassing. It was not embarrassing because I knew.
Yeah, well, you know, embarrassment aside, uh, you know, I I'm certainly in favor of in ensuring that you get the information you need so that you can enforce the ordinance. Uh, the uh, it's interesting to note that Colin makes mention, he doesn't give any specifics in terms of a citation in Title thirty-eight, but uh that apparently a new law, and in fact, I assume this means last September, uh, that gives uh DEP the ability to return all NERPA applications if they don't meet shoreline zoning specs. Um, that applies to me that they better train their uh, uh, NERPA staff.
No.
It's, uh, I mean, Colin says in this, that that's happened, but um, you know, maybe it.
And we used to do in division meeting or something, we'd have a training for the NERPA staff. But, you know, it's like a two or three hour thing in which I think they take the, a lot of times take the approach, I, I'm here to do my job here, this permit. Uh, and they don't think about it.
Yeah.
Shoreline zoning.
But they be.
Again, I don't know what other, you know, Cohen says where it's happening these days, and I don't have any reason to tell him, no, that's not the way it is. I don't have any.
Yeah.
You know, that's not for me at this point.
Yeah, right, no.
Would they be expected to know Belgrade shoreline zoning ordinance?
No, no, there is, but you know, if they know chapter one thousand, they know ninety-eight point nine percent of Belgrade, so. Um, the uh, well, anyway, that, that kind of answers my question, uh, Hans. Uh, another question I had, there's no intent here, your committee's recommendation doesn't, uh, one of intents isn't to um, expand the shoreline zone, and by that, what I mean is the Natural Resource Protection Act regulates areas that are not in the shoreline zone. And or currently are not in Belgrade shoreline zone. For example, tributary streams are not in the shoreline zone. Uh, by and large, um, the uh, most of the mileage of them in Belgrade are not in shoreline zoning. Um, the uh, uh, but they do fall into NERPA or set within seventy-five feet of them falls on NERPA. That's not your intent to expand shoreline zoning to those tributary streams, or?
No.
Do I have that correct?
No.
Okay.
You have. One point, you mentioned things that aren't covered. Another one that wouldn't be covered uh is piers and docks. Currently, we do not regulate in shoreline zoning, piers and docks with a permit.
Or anything below the normal high water mark.
Yeah, anything, yeah, anything below the normal high water.
That's a state problem.
Pardon me?
That's a state problem, not a CEO problem.
No.
The docks and that kind of.
Right. The, another one would be uh wetlands that are not connected to a great pond.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's some big wetlands um between the Dunn Road, behind Dunn Road and 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 the West Road that are uh, they're, they're not in shoreline zone. Even though they're, you know, you're wintering areas and all that.
Okay, so I want to take a motion to, to uh, I guess to uh incorporate this suggestion in the ordinance.
Right, I'm, I'm sorry to, I, I have one more question. I, I, I do. I don't understand how a notice kind of thing would work in this instance, um, the uh, um, maybe somebody could walk you through it, because I, the, at the last meeting, Hans, you talked about adding something to um, section fourteen, the uh table of when a permit. A permit's required and 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 um. Yeah, the language that's proposed here alone is not going to work, in my opinion. Um the uh having a a notice in the ordinance is is, you know, not going to result. In uh. And landowners, when they apply for a um NERPA permit. And are not applying for shoreline zoning permit, even though if one might be required. Uh for them to know that, they have to provide that notice, and so I'm I'm just curious, how the house is going to actually work on the ground? Uh I don't, the notice part just doesn't, I can't figure out how it would work.
I I missed that, that's, we're talking about suggestion one?
Yes, yeah, this is an after the fact notice to the town, not a upfront. Notice or um or uh permit. And well, it seemed to me if this was to work, would actually we'd have to require them to get a shoreline zoning permit. Whenever they apply for a NERPA permit.
No, so same as like the septic, where it needs to be inspected. Okay, there's a provision in here when a property is transferred that the septic inspection must be done and submitted to the town office. Okay, so right here in the beginning of fourteen, you put the same type of notification that when a NERPA or a. A copy must be sent to the town office, to a code enforcement officer.
So it would just be a. Uh it would replace that note on the uh on the page twenty seven?
I would put it on page twenty two at the very beginning. At the head, before they even looked at the table. Putting up there on the letters.
And what would that say, Hans?
It said wherever you want, but to be a best that I mean, permit by rule that is issued. Must be sent to the town office for review. It's not saying they gotta get a permit just to have it reviewed.
Now, the suggestion was to to get a a permit.
But these don't all require permits, so if they get a permit by rule to do. You know, reconstruct the retaining wall.
Right.
And they don't need a permit from us to do that.
Okay.
But they need a NERPA permit.
You get that right.
So, Rich, I don't know, do you have the language that they proposed?
Pardon me?
Do you have the?
I don't actually.
Okay, you want me to read it, you want me to read it? Uh let me read it, uh, because it raises another question.
But they're aware, awareness, what's happening.
I've read this, one of the first, I thought of was, when I read verse two sentences. There's a lot of DEP permits that don't require shoreline zoning, so. How do we make them apply for a shoreline zoning permit for projects, if we did it, we'd have to. Kind of.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that kind of goes to the question I asked. Earlier, you know, because like you said, there are areas of Belgrade that require a a natural resource protection act. Permit which undertook certain activities that are not in the shoreline zone. And um and, I mean, in one sense, it, as long as we don't change the map. By putting something in the ordinance, it only applies to those areas that are on the map. Uh so it's sort of implied, but um it might need to be clarified in anything, any language we add. But uh if we add any, uh but, so there is one thing with this language that uh gives me pause. I I I don't think we want to limit this to uh just permit by rules, I think we want to include all. Uh Natural Resources Protection Act uh permits, because the larger permit by rules are just for the itty bit, you know, the rinky dink ones. Um the big ones uh that they, you know, do a full review on um. Uh would be included if we limit this to permit by rule.
Yeah, I would agree with that, question to Hans. Does the town not already receive a copy of every PBR that is is issued?
Lately we have, but again, two years ago, we've got nothing. And so it's something that I've been pushing for and, you know, I'm getting it from Stuart now, everyone who sends in copies me on. But we had a really bad summer.
Well, you you're not ordered to do that, this is something that you started because you.
He's doing this courtesy, there's no rule saying he has to, and from DEP or NERPA side. I guess they're supposed to, but again, it's whoever's processing that paper. If they set or decide and don't send it, then it doesn't get sent.
Cause I know the PBRs are like carbon, at least the what they used to be anyway, was a carbon copy of about four pages. And one went to the land, back to the landowner, one filed the DEP and then there was one for the town. Uh that should be. I mean, apparently it's working now, but.
As far as I know, I had some, I don't know if I'm getting them all, but if you have the landowner, give them responsibility to also. Come and submit it for review.
The point is that you do walking into this job, that was not in the ordinance, that was not order to you to do. Or to be aware of.
I I mean, in that, the example you gave, that was with Seven Lakes Alliance, not all landowners.
They're working for the landowner.
Well, they are, I'm not saying, I'm just saying there was a central en- entity that you could focus your, you know. Effort on, uh rather than all the land, this would apply to all the landowners uh in a shore shoreline.
Whether they, that Seven Lakes Alliance is a contractor.
Yeah, I mean, that was a problem when it was BRC, a uh and my sons were in high school, worked for them and. And now they're in their mid thirties, so.
What's an example of something that they they would get a PBR, but not have to get a permit from us?
Like rebuilding a retaining wall at the water's edge, following you, uh doing an outfall pipe. You know, a a foundation drain down to the water. That typically doesn't require a permit from us, because it's a maintenance type thing, and they're not disturbing a whole lot of soil.
Right. And you'd be able to issue these permits as well?
In a situation like that, I would not, because a permit's not required, but I would review. What they got from the state to see if a permit was required at our level. For our ordinance.
It's almost like the, it's a category making sure that the, the ball that is getting is good, yeah. Gotcha, ah, the ball is good, move on, ah, the ball is good, ah, no, this one is cracked, we need to go to a plan board.
See, Cohen and I have gone back and forth, you know, it's the chicken and the egg. He wants them to come get our permit first and then apply for the permit by rule. But if a permit's not required here, they don't need one, so it's not like he's going to expect to see one every time. Whereas I'd rather go, the people go there first and then come here for a review. It's even if they don't need a permit, at least we get to review it, know what's happening, so when the phone rings.
It's kind of awareness, yeah.
So we kind of agreed that. We're just going to keep doing things the way we we have been, but. This would be helpful for just expanding knowledge base of what's going on.
So, we seem to be talking about two different things, you folks are, and this language talks about a permit, getting a permit. You're talking about a notice.
I wanted, yes, well, a copy so that we can review it. I by no means want to issue a permit for every permit that they get from the state, it's it's not in our ordinance, we can't issue a permit. If it's not required by the ordinance.
This this language clearly talked about getting a permit.
Right, it is, we, I mean, we worked with Hans. Uh on this and um we, I mean, this is our interpretation of. What where we wanted to go with this, and so, but I mean, it's not, can be more than PBRs, obviously. And it doesn't have to be a permit.
Yeah, the intent is just so that there's some level of review to capture those that didn't get a.
Because right now, it's it's a, it's a process that's sort of ad hoc by the by the state. And if they get a new employee and, you know, maybe they forget to do it or or something happens like that. I don't know if this is going to uh correct, no, it's not going to perfect that. Uh but if you can get the landowner to apply, maybe that's some, maybe that's going to catch more of them, I guess.
And again, if you want to refer to the septic language for, you know, having the inspection copied on file at the office. And that's kind of all we're asking is that they give us a copy to have on file.
Well, I I guess I I've come around to, um I'm okay with the the process that's been described. I think this language needs a little bit of work um. Uh for it to be workable, but um that's, you know, not an insurmountable task by any means.
Yes, my thinking is, at this point, we can't resolve the language, but if we like the concept of. In a notice, that we can make a positive. Finding or move forward or whatever, even if we don't know exactly what we're doing right now, right, yeah.
I'm I'm good with that.
So, we're ready to move on then?
Yeah, along the lines of what Rich was describing, yeah.
And I can't make a motion.
So I I'll uh entertain a motion to that.
Um, I'll make a motion uh that we move forward with the concept of requiring. Um submission of Natural Resources Protection Act. Um.
Documentation.
Permit or documentation um to the code enforcement officer.
A PBR.
Well, that's part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's only one of the two types of permits.
All right, so I hear your motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, so Mr. Shehaw, a motion, Mr. Sargeant have a second, any further discussion? I see none, so we're ready to go, Mrs. Caro?
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant?
Yeah.
Mrs. Seal?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Mr. Angus, five in favor, no opposed, motion carries.
So, our intent is to get this to this, get this on March meeting, so we have to have final language.
That's right for both of.
For the next meeting.
That's right. And we we we're counting on you, Mr. Seal.
What'd you say, Rich?
I'll say, I'll volunteer to to kind of work on this.
Oh, I guess so.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to that.
So, that's wonderful, um. So we are done, I guess, with the all business of the, with the uh Lake and Natural Resources Committee, I think. Anything else we can help you with?
We're here to help.
All right, well, thank you, thanks everybody, thanks for your attention.
So, um, next thing we'll be tackling the the draft ordinance changes for actual building obligations.
So, um. I did uh make the changes that we discussed at the last meeting and and the revised version is in in your packet. Um, you know, uh I, I, the big one being, uh we had just. Just settled on um seventy five percent of floor area as um. A uh, the demarcation for uh between a principal and an accessory structure. That an accessory structure couldn't be any more than seventy five percent of the floor area, the principal structure. And uh let's see, what else? I don't have my memo in front of me, didn't say what else I did.
What's that and any other definitions? Bunkhouse and cooking facilities.
Yeah, that was in there before, uh oh, cooking facility. Uh uh it's, and that comes from um wastewater regulations, state wastewater regulations.
What version is, I couldn't, I've never seen that.
Uh I think. I thought the two thousand twenty two?
From D D H S, D D H is S word.
Yeah, I know what it says, but I've got the book in there, it's not there. And I like the definition. But I just don't think, I haven't put notes in it, so we just. And I guess where it came from is irrelevant, if we want to adopt it, we adopt it.
Yeah, I I didn't make it up myself, actually, um. Can't find it now.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, might be relevant, we're just taking the.
Here's my biggest question is, can we have a definition of the ordinance? Of something that's not in the ordinance? In other words, we're defining a bunkhouse, defining cooking facilities and defining a detached bedroom. But nowhere in the text of the ordinance is, are those words used?
Our cooking facilities is in the definition of residential dwelling unit.
Okay, yeah.
Uh but I think you're right about bunkhouse and and detached bedroom. I, Hans uh sort of advocated for the detached bedroom definition. Uh the bunkhouse um was put in there, not so much because it's using it. In the uh and maybe this isn't a good reason, but um it's, I mean. You know, people tend to use that term a lot in their application.
Yeah.
Uh and um that that was the reason why um. It's there, um but.
My my thought might be that in a table of of land uses. That we can incorporate. Maybe under accessory structures, uh or or. Somewhere in that that says where you need a permit for, code ops or or whatever, that we. Incorporate bunkhouse and detached bedroom. So that when you go back to the definition. You're you're actually referencing something that we're regulating within.
I mean, the fact of the matter is, with respect to that court decision, whether we have a. A definition of bunkhouse or not is irrelevant, you know, uh whether that that was. You know, whether that or not that structure was a bunkhouse wasn't even part of the discussion.
Yeah.
Um the uh uh I think the intent was, the idea was that a bunkhouse is a. Type of accessory structure and and let's make sure it is indeed an accessory structure.
I'm not arguing with the intent, I just, we ought to, we ought to find out whether you can in fact legally. Make a definition that references, that doesn't reference text in the ordinance or isn't in the text.
Yeah. I I certainly don't know of any place where it's used currently.
I I don't think so. And but I may be wrong, you may be, in the definitions, define something that's part of the definition. I mean, all of these are. Pieces of an accessory structure, which we have a definition for, so maybe in that case, we're okay. I would just suggest that we. If. Now, this is all gonna be reviewed by. The town attorney when you get done, right?
Yeah, um. You know what, I remember now, I I don't have it with me, but I I remember where. The definition of cooking facilities came from and um. And detached bedroom, it came from, it was a memo, I think you shared with us, Hans, uh from D H H S. And uh talking about recent changes to their regulation. All of a sudden dawns on me. Uh but neither really at. More a question, an issue is bunkhouse and detached bedroom, because you're right, neither of those terms are. Are used in the ordinance currently.
I like the definitions, I just wanna make sure. If we're gonna do this that way, that we're doing it. Cause it clearly defines is that, it defines. A subset of a accessory structure. But the definition, I I like the the text for your definition.
Yeah, I mean, cooking facilities is defined in detached bedroom. With that. To read the definition of detached bedroom, it kind of defines cooking facilities.
It does, yeah.
Not cooking facilities, I mean, the verbiage is almost identical to what.
Yeah.
You found there, so.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, it it clearly references an accessory structure, which is defined.
Yeah, I mean, the of those three definitions, as far as I'm concerned, the most important one is cooking facilities, because that. Is the key terminology that we've always focused in on. When determining whether something or not is a residential dwelling unit. Relative to flat size requirements.
Yeah, but that's out the window, now it's, how big is the, you know.
Right, yeah, there's more to it, yeah, no, that's right, yeah. Uh, there's more, more to it now.
Is this the first time we discuss this or?
No.
Second time.
Okay. You guys, you guys are all okay with seventy-five percent.
At most, maybe. It's like, you know, does it? You know, I think he wants us to take into consideration size relative to the existing primary residence. And then also, does it replicate it as far as like? Does it have some of the same features, but it's?
Yeah. No, they aren't.
That those seem like the two main things, does it replicate the primary residence and what is the size in comparison?
I just did some math and, you know, nine hundred square foot, say thirty by thirty. And uh seventy-five percent of that, I think, was uh. Maybe I didn't get that right, but I was thinking it was. Twenty-five by, twenty by thirty, which is still a good sized building, but. But anyway, if it would be, it would be nice.
He gave us a percentage, but they didn't, they didn't give us a percentage.
And if you said you're happy with that, I'm not gonna try to change your mind.
Well, uh, none of us were happy with any of this.
I guess that's a fair statement.
Yeah, none of us are.
Like if they wanted to build, let's say, a garage.
Yeah.
If the garage was almost. Garage was like eighty percent of the main structure, maybe that goes because it's just a garage. But if it was eighty percent of the same structure and also had bedrooms and had bathrooms, then it's.
I can't wait for somebody from Guilherme. To take this back into the Supreme Court, because up there, you go and the house is this big, and then the garage is this big. It's just, it's the way things roll, but then most of those uh constructions are not right in the shoreline zone. Yeah. It's the way things roll.
Wants a two-car garage.
Yeah.
It's pretty good sized building, you're gonna.
Right.
That one can't have your garage.
Well, I get a five, five-car garage.
So, one thing.
So that would be an accessory structure, but if they made it bed, if they, it was the same size as a two-car garage, but then they put bedrooms and a bathroom, they're saying that. Now that's not okay.
Yeah. So, one thing just worth noting is, and we talked a little bit about this last time, you know, the uh. The si- uh seventy-five percent is based on, like the court decision, is based on floor area of the principal structure. And there is a definition of floor area in the ordinance already. Apparently, when uh we never eliminated it back when we switched to uh footprint. So we're thinking ahead, maybe, I don't know.
So, uh for my part, I'm very good with that, it's drafted right now. I don't know, we needed a motion. To, I said what is drafted and send it to lawyers, or how we're gonna think about that?
Well, one last comment on my part, um. Because we're responding directly to a Supreme Court decision versus, you know, something that we're initiating on our own and and. Because we thought it was a good idea, I was thinking that it might be prudent. That rather than wait till the end of the process and it's all over like a crying. Send it to the attorney after, assuming we approve it or moving it, moving it forward. Uh to the next step, uh between now and the next meeting, we ask. Forward this to the coroner and ask her to have the town attorney look at it. Because there's no point in us bringing this to the select board if he's got some major problems with it. In my opinion, so.
And should, should we? Kind of help that process along by letting them know that. We don't have any verbiage about detached bedroom or bunkhouse in our ordinance, so is a way.
You know, what I could do is write a short cover memo and ask, ask those question, ask that question.
The other, the other possible way of doing is, if you go to page twenty-five in our allegiance. It's the land usage table.
Yeah.
Number sixteen. If we stuck in there structures accessory to allow you, uses, including bunkhouses and. Uh detached bedrooms.
You found it, huh?
Pardon me?
You found it? We're using that new.
No, no, we're not, he's suggesting a place where we could put it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh which um.
So where would you put it on page twenty-five?
Yeah.
Structures accessory to.
Allowed uses including.
Bunk houses and.
Detached bedrooms.
They're saying we don't need to have, have those two definitions.
I kinda like.
They'll have the definition.
Yeah, I kinda like that.
You're making it so natural that I thought it was it already.
Yeah, I I I think that works myself.
No, I see it.
We still are getting structured, structures and services, allowed uses, then goes non-conformal law, conformal law.
Right, and we're, on the same line as allowed uses. Would be something like comma, including bunkhouses and detached bedrooms. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, you're making it clear that that's an accessory structure and you're including that in needing this permit here.
So you're adding number fifteen, under eight fifteen A.
Six.
One two, one, a non-conformal law, two, conformal law, then suggesting bunkhouses, detached bedroom. Are you page twenty-four?
Well, I'm on twenty-five.
I'm on twenty-four.
Okay, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Fifteen and sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen years old, okay? And.
Yeah, so. So it'd be sixteen, and it would read. Like currently, structures accessory to the loud uses, comma, including bunkhouses and detached bedrooms. That would be the new language.
That would do what exactly?
That would just clarify that those two types of structures would be considered an accessory. Structure.
I mean, but they aren't, they already?
Well, well.
They are, yeah, they are, they are, but it gets those two terms in the ordinance, so. Then we can define them.
So is that gonna cause a problem because all the other accessories aren't listed?
Including but not limited to.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, because now you're limiting all the, yeah.
Well, you actually say.
I mean, maybe we're better off just eliminating the definitions of bunkhouse and detached bedroom.
Uh, no, 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 that. Who cares?
I'll ask you, why don't we leave it that we won't do anything and we'll ask the attorney?
No, I think that would work.
I think that we, we may have to like come up with like a, like a specific definition of when somebody's building an accessory structure. Like, we might have to come up with percentages, but you know, it's, it's hard to even.
Well, we're getting seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
Only problem is, yeah.
So what you're saying is, what you're saying that that doing that will restrict it?
We can't have the same amount of bedrooms or that, I don't know.
Somehow, I don't know, I just, I say we settle it. Uh, see what he says.
Yeah.
When you do it, are you planning to uh? Ask him about the definition not being in the ordinance?
Yeah.
Maybe you can also say, here's a, here's a possibility with the. Uh accessory structures included, and see what he has to say about that.
Okay. At the end of the day, he said basically it's up to our interpretation. That was really.
Gonna kick the ball back to us.
Basically, it's up to you guys.
That was a Supreme Court.
Well, no, even the attorney, basically. At the end of the day, it comes up to you. Use your best judgment.
If the good attorney, that's a, that's a definition of a good attorney. They wanna get committed, they get the big bucks, you know? To keep the ball home.
You know, it's, it's about four hundred dollars an hour.
But if we come up with something that's really defined. You know, and he, and he signs off on it, then.
In the definition of accessory structure, you mentioned that garage, which is not in the ordinance either. So, why don't you just put it into the definition of accessory structure, including. Detached bedrooms and bunkhouses. You got them defined below it.
Yeah, but everything, like chairs and.
Well, except that just clarifies that that, those are. Part of the principal structure.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that sort of has the same issue that we just discussed in the other location, that if you list a. One or two, you got a list of more, just.
If you, if the more vague, you, everything falls under, rather you start naming things, now everything else is excluded. Even though it falls under the first two.
Is a bunkhouse? That's the only thing on the property, an accessory or a principal structure? It's more a joke than anything.
Yeah, good, good thing.
I was at one today. It's a bunkhouse and they got an outhouse out back. It's a bunkhouse.
That's how they use.
So no plumbing?
No plumbing, well, they got water drawn from the lake, but there's no toilets, sink, I mean.
Where I bet they have a little microwave and they have a little fridge. I bet you.
I didn't go inside.
You can have a microwave and a fridge on. Right?
That's a kitchen, so.
We've, we've asked that question, I.
I thought you could, the attorney said you could have a microwave and a fridge.
Have a fridge, the microwave's a cooking device.
But it's not listed as of right now, right? Oh, it is.
The, it's, as I said before, we, none of us were happy with this whole thing, we just had to comply to somebody. Hopefully from Guilherme area or Doorflop, go, go back to the Supreme Court and knock them off. So, in the meantime, we start play this game. To keep the town out of the liability. So I hear.
That never happens, well, then we'll go back and change the ordinance back, it'll stay on that there.
Well. Yeah, I mean, hopefully if. One of the things that uh MMA does is they review these court decisions and and uh sometimes they put out notices telling you about. And, and you know, and the, you know. The ordinance is gonna be changed thus and so. Uh, the question is, you know, will we find out about it? Uh, is, we may not.
So I gotta give you the positive part of this whole thing. We're gonna be the first planning board in the state doing this. So we all can go as consultants now.
Being the first of the.
Yeah.
It only costs us uh fifty grand.
Well, the lawyers got. I thought a hundred, twenty, forty, more, around that, that much. Anyways.
Ain't counting, ain't counting.
I count, yeah. Go on, she, so uh, we're gonna, we're gonna entertain a motion to get this back. To get, to get this done.
Yeah. I think somebody else should make it.
Okay. We entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, it's in this language to.
Excellent. Second, so we have a motion from Mr. Alexander and a second from Mr. Sakaro, so any further discussion? I see none, so Mrs. Caro.
Yes.
Mr. uh Sergeant.
Yeah.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And Mr. Angus five in favor and no opposed, and we're gonna send in this to the lawyer. So, the next item in the agenda. Is doing the minutes. But I don't see any minute.
Yeah, they're big.
So, uh, uh, next, after that, then will be a seal.
I got nothing.
Right? Any further discussion? Any further discussions? So I'll enter a motion for adjournment.
You have any minute?
Uh, no, a minute.
These are second, second.
Yeah, these are the ones that were supporting the uh, the uh.
That's a subdivision.
Any, I, I'm, I'm entertaining a, a motion to adjourn. Thank you, second. Okay, so we are in motion and second, uh, Mrs. Caro.
Yes.
Mr. Sergeant.
Yeah.
Mr. Seal.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. And Mr. Angus, so we are adjourned.
Has nothing to do with anything. Than either, then we're. More curiosity, you know, the guy that got the permit for the. Car sales, did he just go to funk or is he just not?
I don't know for sure, I suspect that um. He had another car lot up in Bangor. And I think that might be draining him. So he's trying to unload that property right now.
And we all be.